Like all this June 21st, 2021, Castle County Board Commissioners Meeting. This time if you will join me in a moment of silence. Amen. You will be the 25th and 26th.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic, with which you stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Time's done when we need to motion going to public hearing concerning our 2021, 2022 budget. We have motion being set, so discussion comments. All those in favor, I, I, you vote. Motion period is now finished. This time we will have any public comments related to, to our budget.
Mr. Chairman, before, before you go on, if you don't mind, this evening it looks like we've got Mr. Carter remotely. If you'll just do a roll call voting, since we do have one member of the board participating remotely, all of that remote meeting required.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we're, we're voting again on having a public hearing. Commissioner Carter?
Yeah.
Commissioner Dickerson, Commissioner Hall, Commissioner Jeffries, Commissioner McVey, Commissioner Osterreger, Commissioner Owen, I. So we now send the public hearing. At this time we will have any public comments concerning the budget. We will conduct this just as we do our regular public comments. You will be limited to three minutes. I will give you an indication of when you have one minute left, so you can be aware of that. So, uh, now I'm not sure if all of these are for the budget or, so I'm just going to go through the list. If you're not for the budget, if you want to do regular pu- public comments, you can just let me know. Elaine Claggett.
Push this.
Yes, ma'am.
Hello, my name's Elaine Claggett. I reside at 108 J Lane, Providence, North Carolina. Just wanted to go over a few points that I heard while listening to you talk about the budget. The first is the detention center. Total revenues are projected to be $708,000. Expenditures are approximately $1,750,000, resulting in over $1 million deficit. Again, reduction of expenditures was not discussed for five minutes during your budget meetings. It's hard to find solutions if problems are not acknowledged. Not to mention the debt service payment of $770,000 this year. How long is this sustainable for taxpayers? In contrast, you voted to have consultants sell our home health agency service because it's costing the county $200,000 to $250,000 annually. In regard to public schools, the county rec- the county manager recommended $3,207,000 spending. Why? In 2011, there were 312 students attending Castle County schools. In 2016, there was 2,700 students with county appropriations of $2,370,000. That averages $918 of students. Last year, the schools were given $2,655,000. Meanwhile, enrollment continues to drop down to 2,307. You continue following, if you continued fi- funding at the previous rate of $918 per student, you would save taxes over half a million dollars this year. Why do you require additional tax dollars for fewer and fewer students each year? According to the 2019 census, there are over 300, 3,000 children ages 5 through 18 living in Castle. Meaning, over 700 are attending either charter schools, private schools, or home schools. During the last three school board meetings alone, 17 students are requested transfers to other public school districts. At the current $1,150 students, a dollar per student, that's a quick $20,000 payment reduction. Additionally, Castle State's supplement is supporting the housing state, compensating for smaller tax pay for local funding for tier-one counties. Above and beyond the local operating budget, an additional $552,000 of local operating expansion budget and capital outlay is to be handed over to the schools. Why? The wish list items included teacher supplements, HVAC, activity bus social work, landscaping, and electrical work. Their 13, their $11.3 million stimulus budget covers most of these items as teacher retention, fire positions, technology, and HVAC. Their $2.3 million in unrestricted fund balance certainly could support an activity bus of landscaping. Did you not compare list? What are you buying for $552,000 extra dollars? Not to mention the $35,100,000 BYHS construction. Do you want me to quit or continue? I've got about a third of a page.
I'll, I'll give you fifteen, twenty more seconds if you can.
Two minutes.
No.
Okay, I'll go. Time from someone else.
Reverend Brian Chalfman.
Well, my name is Reverend Brian Chalfman from Chalfman Loop Road. I don't stand for myself today. I stand as president of the Thomas Day Castle Hope NAACP branch here in Castle County. I know this is a planning budget meeting, but I would also like to talk about the alarm system that need to be placed in Anderson community, which was not placed in the budget anywhere. So, I'd like to begin. We all are human beings and should love one another. But to say we love one another, we must take care of one another. Let me go a step further and break the love language down for the Anderson community. Throw out the race and investigate Jesus face and you would see love at its best. When we humbly look at the face, you must take inventory of your actions. What I mean by this is, the Anderson community is overburdened with cumulative impacts, or shall I say a dumping ground of stressors, a mini zoo. It's dumped on top of us and when we ask questions, you say, "Go to the zoo to get answers." Really? No, we voted for you, for your love and protection. So we are coming to you again, asking for you all to show the community some love. The community wants some type of alarm system, a robo-call, put in place when an animal in the zoo gets loose or attacks someone. We, the black people, and yes, I said, black people, are sick and tired of being scared in our own community. Scared to sit outside without being on watch. Scared when we start our cars early in the morning. Scared that our kids and grandkids play outside by themselves. Why? Because of the roaring of the lions, tigers, and wolves at any time, especially early morning and late at night when you're sitting on your deck. See, love would not put lions, tigers, and wolves 200 feet or closer to someone's home. And not to expect that eventually the cumulative impact would not kick in or catch up. I'm getting ready to take my seat, but before I do, I need to tell you, I'm proud of you all for saying yes on the zone. Congratulations, great step. But please set a time to the planning board so they can get back to a recommendation where it won't linger over 45 days and to have an approved resolution. But also, the community wants you to place a alarm, place in the budget some type of protection for them of any type of danger that may come from the mini zoo. If you can relook at explosives, demolitions, then you could take time and look at the types of cumulative impacts to be looked at in the Anderson community, family. I pray that the love of God will and shall lead your heart to protect His people and protect us by protecting what God created out of love, and that is clean air, clean water, clean land, and life, so we can live it out accordingly in peace and happiness. God bless.
I'm unable to make out the names on the next. It is.
Sorry, Dr. Don.
That's okay, right?
I hope the mic is on.
I am Anita Faust, 2501 Hughes Mill Road, Burlington, North Carolina. Castle County Commissioners, I am a member of the Anderson Community Group. Please act to the budget and alarm system or robo-call system to alert our community of when an animal attacks humans or escapes from their enclosure at the animal park at the conservatory center located on Hughes Mill Road. Also, thank you Commissioners Nathaniel Hall, Rick McVey, Steve Osterreger, and David Owen for voting for zoning. Please extend the moratorium if the zoning process goes beyond the moratorium's last date. Thank you.
Could we have her name again?
Anita Faust. Anita, Anita Faust.
Thank you. Ernestine Hamlet.
Evening Commissioners. Um, my name is Ernestine Hamlet, and I'm not here to talk about the budget, but I am here to ask a few questions. Um, one is, I've been talking with a lot of the people in the community and we are not getting the agenda. So can we continue to get that agenda? I understand maybe you had a transition, but we are not getting the agenda. Uh, that's number one. And number two is, uh, why, what is it? Is it, are there any updates for redesigning of the town square? As stated in the previous meeting in the fall of the year, it was stated that we would get updates. Uh, and we have not been getting any updates as far as the redesigning of the square. The survey ended in, on April the 22nd, and it was done electronically or computerized. And so, um, we haven't had any updates as far as the results of that survey. We're coming up on a year 625, which we were under a curfew last year. And this has been ongoing for a year. So my question is, what is your plan moving forward redesigning of the square? Another question I have is, are you waiting for some particular group, agency, staff to report their progress in their reporting of redesigning of the square? I know you had several staff working on different things. And so I'm just wanting, do you have a deadline for those groups reporting for the redesigning of the square? Uh, and that was basically what I had. I just had a few questions that were unanswered. We are not getting the agenda and we're not getting any updates on the redesigning of the square. No updates on the survey. Thank you.
Is anyone else who would like to make a public comment? Claggett.
My name is John Claggett. I reside at 108 J Lane, Providence, North Carolina. And this is to continue Dr. Claggett's statement. Maintenance. Currently, maintenance is short-staffed with two housekeeping and two grounds crew to maintain 14 county facilities, which include Farmers Lake and Pelham Industrial Park areas. Request for two additional staff was dismissed as it would be a re- recurring expense. A proposal was made for approximately five buildings to be cleaned by a service that will cost $120,000. Will this not be a recurring expense? Even with this additional cleaning service, the maintenance staff is severely stretched for the remaining nine buildings and grounds without additional help. You have $6 million in COVID and stimulus funds, which could cover cleaning and maintenance support staff. Coast Square. A couple of years ago, you invested an initial $300,000 in Coast Square. Measure IO, their anchor tenant, allegedly moved their headquarters to Yanceville and were supposed to create jobs. However, they had failed to show up other than a sign on a door. Also, does this almost empty building really require a professional cleaning service three times per week? Economic development revenues are projected at $8,000. Expenditures are listed as $184,719. Economic development plus Coast Square operations of $82,000. That leaves a total loss for economic development this year of $192,911. Vehicles. Over the past year, vehicle lease budget has increased from $104,706 to $342,106. Why does this county need one vehicle for every two employees? Thank you.
Anyone else have public comments? Time of this motion to close the public hearing. Oh, that motion second. Would the roll call voting close the public hearing? Commissioner Carter? Commissioner Dickerson? Commissioner Hall? Commissioner Jeffries, or Commissioner McVey? Commissioner Osterreger? Commissioner Owen, I. Close the public hearing at this time. This time we will go into the Board of Equalization and Review. Bernard.
At this time, uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
At this time, we have not received any value appeals for Mr. Wright. And I don't know if he's had got anything tonight.
Mr. Wright, are you appealing any of the 2021 tax evaluation? Would you come up here and tell us what you're appealing for the 2021?
All right, let me try to speak to that in one guy in here. But right on the front page there, this is, this is the mobile home. I got a map over there. I got two maps. And the mobile home that I own is lot 487, 515, 539, 559, 579. Now, if you look on this second map, it shows you one motor, 668. It's back across the road. Now, if you kind of all over mobile home, you count one, two, three, four, five, six with the one across the road. Now, the problem right here, what we have here, that's why 559 is there. If you go to the, to the back sheet. Well, you see 39 there? You see that parcel number is 8627. Now that parcel number go with 559. 559 is the parcel number for here is 8627. Uh, all the rest of them is 8626. That 559 is cut out of that track. It's a lot to itself. But you look at, look at them second two sheets there. You'll see that 8627, it got a mobile home on. Well, 559 is located. Now you see that mobile home there, it's short of mention. And you look at, the last sheet says 89. You'll see that same mobile home, it done moved over to 8626. Moved in 2018. Now, to get to where I was talking about the lot at the last meeting. Go right behind the first two maps. And we're going to start off, I'm going to show you why I said it was a lot.
Mr. Wright. So, I still don't believe that you, are you questioning the value that was placed that it was assessed during the 2021 tax season on any of your property?
Yes. I'm, I'm, uh, 8626.
The value that was assessed this year, you, okay. All right.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm, I'm trying to get you to point where I'm, I'm, I'm trying, where I'm trying to, about what I was saying about. On July the 13th, 2017, the Carrick County Board of Equalization Review received evidence and heard testimony regarding your appeal. Based on this evidence and testimony, and in due consideration, all applicable law, the Board made the following decision for tax year 2016, effective January 1st, 2016. The county identification number, description, and property under appeal, parcel, pin, account, 8626. Seven eight point eight, asset valuation under appeal of $155,395. Decision of the Board, no change. Now, I ain't going to issue every one of them, but after the, after you, after the Board made that decision on, Board made that decision on July the 13th, 2017. On August the 8th, 2017, Mr. Brenner wrote me a letter and said, "After viewing the information that you submitted to the tax office concerning the homes on the property referenced above, it was discovered that you had, that three of the mobile home sites are shelling well. We have corrected our records and adjusted our payback." He adjusted it down to $141,343. Okay, on August the 20th, I requested AV phone for the appeal to. They go to other part of the. So, on September 13th, 2017, State of North Carolina Department of Revenue Property Tax Division sent me this letter, sent a letter to Mr. Thomas Wright at 559 George Russell Road, "Appeal to the Property Taxation of Carrick County. And Mr. Wright, hereby now receive of your notice of appeal from the decision of the Carrick County Board of Equalization and review filed with the Property Taxation on August the 14th, 2017. You should follow the topic of the notice of appeal to the Carrick County assessment." This, this letter came from Thomas Simpson, Assistant Director of Local Government Division. On October the 17th, I got another letter from the State of North Carolina Department of Revenue. "We hereby now receive of your application for hearing forms AV 14 from the decision of the Carrick County Board of Equaliz- Equalization and Review filed with the Property Taxation on October 12th, October 12th, 2017. Once your appeal has been scheduled for hearing, you will receive a notice of hearing by mail approximately 50 days prior to the proposed hearing." On November the 28th, 2017, I got this letter from Mr. Brenner. "The North Carolina Department of Revenue contacted this office confirming the value of your 69.64 acre parcel land in Carrick County that you appealed to the commission. It was determined that a single wire mobile home on this property still had the term attached, even though caused by concrete block, premier skirt. We have reduced the value of the 69.64 acre parcel to $132,568. We also adjusted your personal property fee by including the single wire mobile home removed from real estate and added to your personal property. The correct value of your single wire mobile home added to your personal property were $3,510. I have attached a copy of the correct real estate fee and the correct personal property. If you agree to the adjusted value of your 69.64 acres as confirmed by the North Carolina Department of Revenue, please sign your tax form and return it to Carrick County Tax Office." Now, all I asked him to do is when he said he will contact the Department of Revenue, All I asked him was, who confirmed it? Now, if he got a letter with any of these, pick a name, which only the Department of Revenue. I dropped it off. But until somebody come over, he lied. He lied on them, he lied on you, because he said he didn't know nothing about this. But if you look at that paper, if you look at that, if you look at that form for 2018.
Mr. Wright.
Yeah.
I still am not sure I understand. What, what are you appealing on the value of the 2021 property?
I'm appealing.
I'd rather not go into all this other. I, I, we need to get to what you're appealing.
I'm appealing this mobile home where they put on 8626, where it moved from 8627 to 8626.
Not the value you're appealing. You're just feeling that.
Because see, see now.
It moved from one property to another.
From one property to the other, of course. He moved it from 8627. He moved it, but it wasn't no mobile home on 8627. I mean, I don't believe you understand what I'm saying. It wasn't no mobile home on 8627. This mobile home is what he got right here. It was never there. It don't exist. It don't exist. So that's what I'm appealing. You can't move something over that's not there. Look at 559. All the rest of them can be accounted for. 559, it's supposed to be a mobile home there and ain't none of that. And this is the one that was supposed to be that. It's 1990. All hanging in on 1990. Five fifty-nine is supposed to be a mobile home there and ain't none of that. And this is the one that was supposed to be that. It's nineteen ninety. All hanging in on nineteen ninety. And, and I can't move from a five fifty-nine to the farm and only one of you own five fifty-nine. Count the one that is, what you saying is in the book. You count that one and count the rest of them, we'll add that and see how many come up with. You coming up with seven? It just, what he, what he did, he charged me for one, kept it on that for all over years, and then when, when we found out about it, he just went to hide. That's why the letter came up there. Because I never said nothing about it. It had been still in the book. It's still in there. It's still in there. See, you ain't even looking at, Mr. Bernard is passing out two different type of form. He printed out one, this is the one where he turned into revenue. Now, it, it could bring something out of that to show about who, who told him that. I ain't saying nothing. And I didn't bring this no copy because everything I got him, I got him out of his heart.
All right. So, you're appealing that you, there is a trailer listed on your property that is not a trailer. Is that what you're saying?
I'm saying, uh, on eighty-six twenty-six, on, on, my, what's the line? Now, see, I ain't even got the updated year for this. But twenty eighteen was the year he did. So, we put it on our day and still should have it on our name. It's on line four. It's right at the top of, of, of notes on, on eighty-six twenty-six. I don't, I don't know what kind of form it be, but on eighty-six twenty-six, it's right at the top of it. It said building five seven nine. But the letter that he wrote, I expect this board to do something about that. But if you don't, it ain't gonna matter to me because I'm gonna tell everybody and every agency that I see, that I know he lied because the, the government don't work like that. They wouldn't have told me that they had a later decision and not told me and make me come with that.
Okay, Mr. Wright. Thank you.
Would we have any comments, questions?
Yes. I tried to do some background research on this and I spoke with Thomas Bernard. And I have the two trailers that are charged for twenty twenty-one. The other sheet here is showing twenty eighteen, but this is the recent information. There's only two being billed by the tax office. And I'm wondering, are one of these two which you're complaining about? Because these are the only two trailers that the tax office has you charged with in twenty twenty-one.
Personal property?
Yes.
I guess I, I, well, I think of one nine, but I went to him and told him I'll take the spot for it to hold and so he put that out.
Well, what I'm saying is these are the only two they're billing you for. I understand you may have had issues in the past, but this board can't go back to those years. And if you only bill, you're only being billed for two that you actually own.
Yeah, I, I understand what you're saying, but, but a mobile home, when they put it on their property, that's a random property that it's sitting on, he charged me for a home site. And each one of them mobile home, he charged me for a home site on. I, I really.
Does the site have well and septic?
Two, one, one way of, one way of owning whole farm on the sixty-nine. One way of on five fifty-nine, puts, puts it, it's definitely one acre. So, but he, 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 he reduce it because we ain't got no way. There ain't, ain't a way that he reduce it. But you can't reduce something that ain't that. The mobile home that on five fifty-nine was not that. And they then he put it on that in two thousand five. I paid him for two thousand four. Well, I paid him up with it up in nineteen ninety-seven. But, but I, I know what you're saying. You can't go back all them years because of, uh, but the landing, see, he charged me fourteen thousand dollars for each one of those properties. So, you talking about maybe about a hundred five dollars for just oh five acres. But, you know, mobile town five, fourteen thousand dollars. That's what I'm concerned about. If ain't no mobile home there, then why is I'm getting charged? That, that's not permanent property, but then that's not twenty eighteen or, or twenty seventeen. That's from two oh four, oh five on up until now. And they won't get it off. And the one that he got in the book on line four, he probably didn't give you something like what I got for twenty eighteen. For twenty eighteen, should have been the same guy in twenty nineteen to twenty twenty. Ain't not been moved. Ain't not been moved. So, really, pay me what he owed me. I don't care nothing about it. But the lie that you told, that's what I'm concerned about.
Further questions at the board? Mr. Bernard?
Mr. Wright? Anything you wanna add to this?
That's a pleasant board on this matter. I'm not sure I really still quite convinced, but to me, it seems that, that this is prior year's issues, which this board at this time cannot that we deal with the current tax year, twenty twenty-one. Uh, Mr. Farrell?
Would it be helpful, Mr. Chair, if I, um, gave you the standard that applies and taxpayer appeals to the Board of Equalization Review?
Yes, sir.
Taxpayer at this stage in the process can appeal essentially one of three things. They can appeal the valuation of property. They can appeal the listing of property. Or, as you'll hear at your next case, they can appeal the denial of an exemption, um, from taxation. Um, in this case, it's not entirely clear to me whether you have a valuation appeal or whether you have a listing appeal. But no matter which type it is, the standard is the same. Um, in North Carolina, um, ad valorem tax assessments are presumed to be correct. And when the assessment is challenged, the burden of proof is on the taxpayer to show that the assessment is erroneous. It's not enough that the taxpayer show the means adopted were wrong. It also must show that the results achieved resulted in a value substantially greater than the true value of money of a particular problem, of a particular property, rather, excuse me. And again, the, the test is the greater weight of the evidence test. It requires that the taxpayer bring forward clear, relevant, persuasive evidence sufficient to persuade you that the presumption that the tax values are correct is overcome by, by the evidence. So, that's, that's your job here. And so, you now have the evidence before you and you have to make a decision essentially to, you know, deny the appeal and uphold the current valuation and listing, um, or sustain the appeal and make some change to the current assessed value or the current, um, uh, tax rules.
Thank you. I, it was a pleasure, Lord. Mr. Paul. I'm sorry, do you have a question? Well, I was gonna ask, Mr. Bernard, you mentioned, uh, home sites. I don't know how it starts that. Uh, were the trailers were silent or situated?
Yes, sir.
How many of home sites were you charged for at the hollow?
Well, in twenty twenty-one, he's got one, two, five home sites on tax map eighty-six twenty-six. Now, they share well, so those values have been reduced because that acre land that that mobile home is sitting on is taking that, uh, that home site. That's what, uh.
And that's what was done some years ago by the one thirty-two?
Yes, sir. When they did the reval, they did, they, they assign a mobile home that's sitting out there and it's got its own septic. And if it's, they do have a, their own septic. One of them does not have water or a septic. And they have their own, so they given a home site and they were adjusted because at the very beginning, I believe, and did reval, they gave them a well. But Mr. Wright came in and determined that, uh, several of those home sites, uh, shared a well. So, they were given a home site with utilities where they got a, they got, you know, electricity, they got water, and they got sewer. But they got, you know, that they're adjusted. Now, the one of those home sites has no utilities. It's with no utilities because the mobile home sitting on that piece of property across the road, but it has no electricity, no water, no sewer.
So, how many years was he charged for those home sites before they were adjusted?
Uh, I'd have to go back in.
Meanwhile.
I don't know. But I think he was, uh, there was adjusted. I know some refunds were given back in the day. Because this came down late, uh, when he came to the Board of E and R, um, latter part of sixteen, seventeen. And we were trying to get all this straight. And then they, they went to the Property Tax Commission. But we adjusted accordingly.
You said, I think I understand. You said they have a trailer on the spot that's called a home site, no water, no sewer, no sewer.
Yes, sir. It's got one across the road that belongs to a hunt club. And I, I think when I, we talked to the people, we got fortunate, they were there when we made them a visit. And, um, that has given them a home site with no utilities. What else? It's a mobile home, mobile home sitting there, but it does not have, uh, water, does not have sewer, no electricity. I think they have a porta john there or something of that nature. No, no, sir. That, that one is charged eight thousand two hundred fifty dollars value.
That's the value of the mobile home?
No, that is the value of the home site with no utilities. It's eighty-two fifty. That, that is prior schedule values from the two thousand and sixteen revaluation, Mr. Bernard.
Any other questions? Mr. Bernard? Thank you. Desire the board? I want a motion that we deny any change in value or listing for the twenty twenty-one tax season. Answer. A motion and second. Comments, questions? All those in favor by local voting, Commissioner Carter? You're muted, Commissioner Carter.
Ah.
Commissioner Dedson, Commissioner Hall, Commissioner Jeffries.
I don't know the session, so.
Okay. Commissioner, Commissioner O'Stryker. Commissioner Owen, ah. Next.
Uh, the next we have is the, uh, denial of the property tax exemption for Epic Casual E. We were, we denied it because of, uh, statute GS one oh five two seventy-eight seven. Um, it says that it has to be, it's talking about the buildings and the land that they occupy. Um, I found some exemptions, uh, two thousand and nineteen. This one, this one had a, has a building on it, but, um, we approved it in two thousand and nineteen. In two thousand and eighteen, we didn't because it was, the property was owned by an individual, which it did not qualify. It needed to be in the, in the church's name to qualify. So, in two thousand and nineteen, we approved it. In twenty twenty, uh, we had a piece of property that, uh, belonged to the Leesburg Volunteer Fire Department. Previous years, they had applied for their property tax exemption. They were denied because it was vacant, no building. Um, in, uh, two thousand, latter part of two thousand and nineteen, they built a substation on the property. Um, so in twenty twenty, when they applied for the application, uh, for the fire department as a substation, we approved that. In two thousand and ten, the same property that Epic Casual owns was owned by a, it was in the name of Ambrose Imp. And they applied for it under, under that and, uh, statute. And, and we denied it because it was vacant property, no buildings. And talking to, um, spoke again with, uh, Doug Huffman, Department of Revenue. Uh, he sent me a court case that went, all we went, the church carried it all the way to the Court of Appeals, where Pender County's Board of E and R's is a vacant property. It was owned by the church. They applied for property tax, you know, exemption. They were denied by the Board E and R. Went to the Property Tax Commission. They were denied by the Property Tax Commission. Went to the Court of Appeals and, uh, this was filed on September the second, two thousand and three. The Court of Appeals upheld the decision of the Property Tax Commission. So, that was the information I found. And, uh, Mr. Farrell, probably, you know, he's the attorney, he had the legal status on there, on everything, explained things.
Okay, Mr. Farrell, would you add to this?
What I'll, um, add is about the, uh, case from the North Carolina Corps of Appeals, which is very similar to the present case. Um, in the matter of the appeal of Church of Yahshua, um, out of Pender County, there, as the, um, tax director said, the situation there was a church owned some vacant land and applied for an exemption under General Statute one oh five two seventy-eight point three. Now, two seventy-eight, uh, point three is different. That, except, that exemption applies to only real and personal property owned by religious, for religious purposes. The exemption we're talking about this evening is one oh five two seventy-eight point seven, which is real and personal property used for educational, scientific, literary, or charitable, in this case, purposes. But the, the, the similarity in the statutes, um, is, is almost identical on the point of the buildings. And let me just read again what, what the statutes, both statutes say about the exemption in that context. It says, "Buildings, the land they actually occupy and adjacent land reasonably necessary for the convenient use of any such buildings shall be extended from taxation if wholly owned by an agency listed in C below." So, essentially, it's the same wording in subsection A of the two statutes. So essentially, it's the same wording in subsection A of the two statutes. The Court of Appeals held that because there was no building located on the property owned by the church, it was not free to expand the definition of the property, even if it wanted to do so. And so the, the, the court noted that exemptions from property taxation are to be construed narrowly. And the court did construe it narrowly, read the language of the statute, and held because there was no building that it could not grant the exemption at that time. I believe that the case there is analogous to the situation that you have before us. Um, in the, the, the case of the church, there was some evidence presented that there may be some buildings, you know, in the future located thereon. And the court noted that, you know, were their buildings built in the future, the result may be different. So anyway, that's the analysis of, of the case that the tax director cited and its applicability to the current situation.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, uh, from the board? It was a pleasure, and board. And by state statute, it's considered as a good... Correct?
That's correct. The statute reads, "Buildings and the land they occupy, and addition, adjacent land necessary for the convenient use of the buildings."
Well, based on the fact that we have used that language and used that statute as it reads to deny other nonprofits exemption until the building is put on. Uh, I, I believe we need to be consistent in what we do until that statute is changed in some way. Therefore, I would make a motion that we deny. Sorry. A motion and a second. Any question, comments?
I believe in the work of the nonprofits, and I really would like to support this motion, but I think our hands are tied by the state law. I believe we have a course that's bound.
Any other comments?
We can define a basketball court as a building. I'd be very happy.
Yeah, this is, this is... This is no indication of what the nonprofit does or, or serves the community. Any other comments? If not, we'll roll call voting. To deny the request, Commissioner Carter? Commissioner Dickerson? Commissioner Jeffries? Commissioner McVay? Commissioner O'Stryker? Commissioner Owen, aye. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Let the record reflect that, Commissioner Hall, I'm saying, you know, looking skilled.
Well, I didn't want to put you on the spot, but I thought, I'll send the record to you. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, we will close. Was, was any other taxpayer? Uh, we can't do that. That's right. We've already done that, correct?
Right. You've already taken the appeals, Mr. Chair, and you've heard the only two appeals. You've made decisions. And so you will, um, not conduct any further business as the board in E and R, um, until next year.
Okay, thank you. We will close. The Board of E and R, ladies and gentlemen. At this time, any public comments? I think we got them doing, like, a little bit. All right, so we'll call public comments closing the recommendations by the board. The recommendations will move on to action items. We need approval of the agenda. We have a motion, so, and a second. Any questions, comments? All those in favor by roll call voting. Commissioner Carter? Commissioner Dickerson? Uh, Commissioner Hall? Uh, Commissioner Jeffries? Commissioner McVay? Commissioner O'Stryker? Commissioner Owen, aye. Are there any corrections to the June seventh, twenty twenty-one regular meeting minutes? Here are any no corrections. The minutes will stand. At this time, we will move to the boards and committees. Gentlemen, we have several boards. As a matter of fact, I think I counted ten of them that have more applicants, I mean, uh, more vacancies than they do applicants. So I'm going to go through those first, and I believe, uh, Mr. Farrell said that we could do those all together. And then we'll come back and cover the ones that are, have more applicants than vacancies. If that's okay with the board, set it between each one. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go through each one anyway. Okay? So these are the ones that have, um, have more vacancies than applicants. Uh, Agricultural Advisory Committee has three vacancies, and the only applicant, uh, is Elizabeth Mason. The Board of Health has four vacancies, and they have three applicants, Scott Fieldman, Adam Evans, Patricia Price Lee. The Regional Board of Economics, uh, Economic Development has one vacancy and one, uh, applicant, Amanda Hyde. The JCPC has six vacancies and only three applicants, Rose Farmer, Cynthia Clayborne, and Chanum Meddick. The Person Casual Lake Authority has one vacancy and one applicant, Josh Atwater. The Piedmont Community College Board of Trustees has one vacancy and one applicant, Shirley Dees. The Adult Advisory Council has three vacancies and three applicants, Annie Lee, Brenda Long, and Marilyn Corb. The Hunting and Wildlife, uh, Committee has four vacancies, and they have three applicants, Frank Rose, Bradley Taylor, Jamie Henderson. The Jury Commission has one vacancy and one applicant, Diane Morphy. The Senior Center Advisory Committee has seven vacancies, and they have three applicants, Cynthia Clayborne, Brenda Long, and Ben Blackwell. So if there are no questions on those, uh, we can make a motion to appoint all those to the, that I've called out to their respective boards. We have a motion, sir, and a second. Any other comments or questions? And these won't be a yes for those that I've just called out. Roll call voting. Commissioner Carter? Commissioner Dickerson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hall? Uh, Commissioner Jeffries? Uh, Commissioner McVay? Uh, Commissioner O'Stryker? Commissioner Owen, aye. So those have been appointed. Now, we will go through those, the other ones, uh, and we'll go through each one. And we will do our nomination, and then we will do our vote. All right, the first one is the ABC Board. Uh, currently, there is one applicant, uh, one vacancy, and we have two applicants, C. Keith Tatum and Patricia Price Lee. At this time, we'll take nominations for that one vacancy.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I nominate Patricia Price Lee.
Any other nominations?
I nominate Keith Tatum.
Okay. Since all those have been nominated, we will go through, we will start and go around, and you will, uh, call out the ones that you are voting for, for the ABC Board. Okay? Commissioner O'Stryker, we'll start on your end.
This Lee.
Uh, Commissioner McVay?
Tatum.
Uh, Commissioner Jeffries?
Taylor.
Commissioner Hall?
This Lee.
Commissioner Dickerson?
Mr. Tatum.
Commissioner Owen? Tatum. Mr. Carter? Oh, sorry. I'm sorry, Mr. Carter. I haven't been able to get to you. Commissioner Carter?
Uh, Mr. Lee. Fisher Lee.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Any tally on that?
It's four for Tatum and three for Miss Lee.
Okay. Mr. Tatum? Do we need to, we don't need to go through the votes, since that's what we did?
You just conducted the vote on the nomination.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the next one is Farmer Lake Board. Farmer Lake Board. We have four vacancies, and we have five applicants. Jerry Sykes, Vinnie Begley, Jamie Henderson, Bradley Taylor, and Kerry Harrelson. At this time, we will take nominations, uh, and you will list the four that you want to nominate.
I make a motion. I make a motion to nominate Cherry Harrelson, Jerry Sykes, Jamie Henderson, and Vinnie Begley.
Okay, any other nominations? Yes, sir. Commissioner Hall? Uh, Vinnie Begley, Jamie Henderson, Brad McKell. The fourth one? No, yes. Okay. Any other nominations? Well, I guess this covers all of them. So we will go through. You will vote by calling out the four that you, uh, are voting for. Commissioner Carter, we'll start with you.
You want me to re, you want me to mention them again?
Yes, sir, the four that you're voting for.
Uh, Cherry Harrelson, Jerry Sykes, Vinnie Begley, and Jamie Henderson.
Commissioner Dickerson?
I'll save you time. My list will say it to Mr. Carter.
Is that okay, Attorney?
Yes, he, he just essentially said the same four names. That's fine.
Okay, just want to make sure. Uh, Commissioner Hall? I think I said, uh, Vinnie Begley, Jamie Henderson, and Brad McKell. Okay. Commissioner Jeffries?
I don't know who to say there. You have four?
No, I said three. You can add what you want.
Well, I have one to give.
Which, which one would you want to add?
What's the...
You have Jerry Sykes or Kerry Harrelson? Okay, Commissioner McVay, Sykes, Begley, uh, Henderson, and Harrelson. Commissioner O'Stryker?
Jerry Sykes, Vinnie Begley, Jamie Henderson, Bradley Taylor.
Commissioner Owen? Will be Jerry Sykes, Vinnie Begley, Jamie Henderson, and Kerry Harrelson. Let me get a minute. Take care of those.
Okay, so the four top is going to be Sykes, Begley, Henderson, and Harrelson.
Okay. Thank you. The next one is Gun Memorial Library Board. We have five vacancies and we have six applicants. We'll start with Commissioner McVay on this one.
Virginia Hodges, Cynthia Clayborne, Kimberly Eaton, Barbara Owen, and Sherri Stanfield Ok.
Any other nominations? Virginia Hodges, Cynthia Clayborne, Kimberly Eaton, Barbara Owen, and Sherri Stanfield Ok were nominated. Here are any other nominations, then we will...
Have a vote on that slate, Mr. Chairman.
All right. I'm sorry.
Vote on that slate.
Yes, we'll vote on that slate. Okay, roll call voting on the slate that you just heard. Virginia Hodges, Cynthia Clayborne, Kimberly Eaton, Barbara Owen, and Sherri Stanfield Ok. All right. Commissioner Carter?
Aye.
Commissioner Dickerson? Uh, Commissioner Hall? Uh, Commissioner Jeffries? Uh, Commissioner McVay? Uh, Commissioner O'Stryker? Uh, Commissioner Owen, aye. The, the, in case you're wondering, the Social Services Board, uh, that one is appointed by the DSS Board, so that one will be taken care of by them. The next one that we have, Tourism Development Authority, we have one vacancy, but we do not have any applicants for that yet, and that is a, a board. Do you know what position, what requirement that is for that vacancy?
Is that the business owner position?
If not, let's just...
We can find out and bring it back to you.
It's your social... Inside, be another person, that third person on that PDA. So... And then the last board that we have here is the Planning Board. We have one vacancy and two applications. Nominations?
I'll nominate, uh, Stephen Harris.
Okay, we have a nomination for Stephen Harris. Any other type of nominations?
I'd like to nominate Gaye Placer.
Okay. Okay, gentlemen, I'll come around and you will vote for one of those two, please. Commissioner Carter?
Stephen Harris.
Commissioner O'Stryker?
Gaye Placer.
Commissioner McVay?
Harris.
Commissioner Jeffries?
Harris.
Commissioner Hall?
Placer.
Commissioner Dickerson?
Harris.
Commissioner Owen?
Harris.
That take care of all the boards. All right, gentlemen. Uh, next on our action item is explosive ordinance, the second reading. Commissioner O'Stryker?
Well, I think we I think we covered this, uh, matter of discussion last time. The, uh, all the members of the present voted for this ordinance with one minor change, which appears to have been made. Um, the only other comment I have on this is my understanding that this will need to be reconfigured or put into the UDO format at some point.
It, it needs to be, um, reformatted and put in the same format that we use with MuniCode for the, our, our code county ordinances that we did a couple of years ago.
And, and that will have no impact on the word either for the ordinance itself?
That's correct.
I'm just asking for our second vote.
Uh, Mr. Farrell, do you have any comments before we move to vote on this?
No, just to confirm what the county manager said about placing it in the MuniCode format. And this is just the required second hearing because I believe one of the members was absent, uh, when it was approved by everyone else, uh, at the last meeting.
And this vote, of course, will be the majority vote.
That's correct.
Okay. Motion approved. So we have a motion, our second. Roll call voting, to approve.
I thought I made that motion.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. I I thought you just said you would call it for second vote.
Yeah, that was my motion.
Oh, I didn't hear you say motion. I'll say just that, we have a motion by Commissioner O'Stryker, and we'll do a second by the rest of the panel. I'm sorry.
Could you repeat the motion one more time?
It will be to approve the explosive ordinance. Okay, roll call voting. Commissioner Carter? Okay, we'll call voting. Commissioner Carter? Commissioner Oestreicher?
Aye.
Commissioner McVeigh?
Aye.
Commissioner Jeffries? Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Dickerson?
Aye.
Commissioner Owen, aye. Passed. Thank you, gentlemen. Next item, next item is the Coast Guard Instruction Contract. Mr. Miller?
Commissioners, on April 16th, 2021, the county-owned co-working space Coast Guard was damaged by, during an accident when a motorized vehicle struck the right front of the building. After determining the structural integrity of the building was attacked, we solicited a quote from a local contractor to repair the damage to the building. The accident was submitted to our insurance company, and we received payment for the damage and success by the adjuster. The quote from the local contractor is less than the amount received from the insurance carrier. The, the quote, the quoted price for the required work falls below the $30,000 threshold for informal bidding, and no bond is required from the contractor. So we would just ask for approval of the contract so we can move forward with getting funds.
Questions? The quote now? The quote from the company, $18,000?
Definitely. I'm not, I'm not 100% sure whether the driver of the motor, motorized vehicle had insurance or not. I know we turned it into our insurance company, and it would be up to our insurance company to determine whether or not the driver had insurance. Kind, kind of keeps the county out of the middle of that. So if they felt like it was necessary to go after the insurance company, or the driver, they would.
Any other questions? Here are no further questions. Pleasure, the board. We have a motion to approve contract, sir, and a second. All those in favor with, we'll call voting. Commissioner Carter?
Aye.
Commissioner Dickerson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Jeffries?
Aye.
Commissioner McVeigh?
Aye.
Commissioner Oestreicher?
Aye.
Commissioner Owen?
Aye.
We have the noted discussion items listed. Is there anything? Need to bring up? Oh. I'm waiting for you to come and show off. I, I, I want to bring it up. It's kind of a tense situation, I suppose. But we probably need to talk about it. Where do we stand in terms of COVID vaccinations for staff?
So vaccinations for staff were left up to staff. We did not require staff to become COVID vaccinated. However, we strongly encouraged vaccination, and we are not keeping records of the staff that have been vaccinated because of the healthcare laws.
So I guess that answers my question, I had. It, it, it begs the question. Maybe in the next month or so, the board might want to discuss staff requirements for vaccinations. Thank you for moving pretty fast across the country. We know schools going to be back there. What we do at the local and the state level will have some impact as we move forward. Colleges and universities are already starting to require vaccinations for their students at fall. The new variant is quickly taking over as the main strength, the main type of COVID in the country. And by the fall, it could be very, very bad here in those areas that have low vaccination rates. So I think that at the minimum, we need to have a discussion about where we see the county going and how it's done. Do you want to... Put a meeting that you would like to have that discussion?
No, not necessarily. If we get it on the agenda, I think within the next month, it would be timely.
The second meeting in July?
That would be timely. I just think we should have a discussion.
Okay. Anything else? Any other discussion items? If not, we'll move on to county manager updates.
Commissioners, I have two quick up... Commissioners, I have two quick updates for you. Number one, I wanted to inform the board that we have received the $2,195,281 American Recovery Plan Fund, funding from the federal government. That was applied for a couple of weeks, five, weeks ago by our finance department, and we have received those funds now. So that's number one. Number two, I know many on the board and many people in the public may have expected to have a public hearing tonight on zoning. And I just want to make it clear that the reason that you're not entertaining a public hearing on zoning tonight is because the Kansas County Unified Development Ordinance, Section 4.1, 0.3.3, states that completed applications shall be received at least 30 days prior to the Planning Board meeting at which the Planning Board first considers the proposed amendment. Therefore, we have to, we made application on the 7th. The board made its motion on 7th, we made application on 7th. So 30 days from that point, the Planning Board can take this. So sometime around the 8th, if the planning board deems it appropriate, they can have a special meeting to take up this issue, but not before. So we just want to follow the letter of our, our ordinance, ordinances and state statute. North Carolina State Statute 160D-604 states, "The governing board shall not hold its required hearing or take action until it has received a recommendation regarding the regulation from the Planning Board." So that's the reason we're not having the public hearing tonight. And I just wanted to make that clear for, for the board members present tonight, and for the public, and for the public press.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Got it.
I'm happy to answer any questions.
Got it.
The 30 days, is that minimum, or can, is that a maximum, or is there any... Help me understand that. If the Planning Board wanted to have a special meeting sooner than 30 days, can they do that?
Here, Ben, I'll read you the text from our UDO. The straight answer is, I don't think so. The, the, the text from our UDO says, "Completed applications shall be received at least 30 days prior to the Planning Board meeting at which the Planning Board first considers the proposed amendment." So I think in all fairness and in good judgment, and to make our ordinance as bulletproof as possible, we need to wait those required 30 days before the Planning Board first considers this proposal.
Mr. Farrell?
Mr. Chairman, I have talked with the county manager and staff about the timeline, and I agree with what the manager just told you.
Thank you. All right, this time, any commissioner comments? Commissioner Oestreicher? Oh. Did I hear something? I was listening, but actually, question. Okay. Who read? What point will we do the final vote on the Confederate statue on the square? I don't know the final vote. I, I know that we, we will get, in July, we will be getting the results of the survey.
That's correct.
And at that point, we will have to begin to make decisions as to where it would be located, if it was, if they were moved. So that will be the next step.
Yes, that's correct.
First or second meeting in July?
Uh, probably the second. Probably the second meeting, well... The, 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 probably in July.
Have there been any cost estimates for the move?
No, and the reason there's not been any cost estimates because, is because if you don't know where you're going to put it, you don't know what ground preparation, or what travel cost, or what impediments may lie in, in the, in the way. So the first thing the board needs to do is determine if the monuments are relocated, where they're going, where they're going to go. And when, when the board determines whether, where the monuments would be relocated to, then we can work on determining a cost for relocating those monuments. But not until, I mean, if it's 300 foot away, that's a, a very different cost than if it's 20 miles away. Or if it's hard soil and compacted soil, it's probably a very different cost than soil, where they're going to have to remove a lot of dirt to be able to place a statue or monument that weighs as much as that would probably would. So there's a lot of different variables and costs, and it's not, I mean, there are a lot of different places we could put the monument. So until it's determined where, where it's going, we really can't determine the price.
Any other commissioners have comments? Not announcements and upcoming events, just remind the board that Wednesday, we have... I'm sorry.
No, go ahead. I'll go ahead.
When, we have our recess budget meeting, we'll reconvene at 9 o'clock. One other item, is, is anyone planning on taking the tour at BYU test on Thursday?
Some. Commissioners, there's two time slots to accommodate for all the members of the board to be able to attend. There's a time slot at 4 o'clock, and there's a time slot at, at 5 o'clock. If the, if the board, if the individual members of the board prefers one time over the other, you can certainly let me know, and, and we'll get you down, whatever time slot works best for you.
I'll plan for... What day is that on?
Thursday, the 24th.
Commissioner McVeigh?
I just wanted to remind everyone about the July 3rd festivities down here at Town Square. We've got fireworks. I know the fire departments are going to be, some of them are going to be providing food. I think the fish and food trucks there. I've heard the economic development will talk about the amount of vendors that are going to be there. I think it'll be a big thing for the community to, so Fisher will be there on July 3rd. There is a band thing. I left that out. Retro playing, I believe, is playing two sets. So just be sure and be there if you're not.
Thank you. Any other announcements or comments?
Yes, sir, Commissioner Hall. Forgot to mention, I was contacted by a representative outside of North Carolina, the mountains to the sea, motorcycle trail. They had a council last year, of the, year before that, they had to stop here in Jacksonville. They were very, very, very pleased, and so they plan to stop here again. The, the cycle date is October 5th, so on Tuesday. And I've already contacted the county manager, and I'm sure he'll put together a team. Make this as good or better than it was two years ago, as they come through.
Good, glad to hear that. One thing I did fail to mention, just so you're aware, I hope you are and you're aware. The Arts Council has an event on the second Saturday of every month from 10 to 2, where they're open, the museum is open. I can't remember what all, do you know what all is open?
Market towels open.
Yeah, the market towels open.
There's a lot of different businesses that would not usually be open that are in downtown.
Yep, and that's from 10 to 2. I haven't been able to 10 one yet, but I hope to get to the next one. But that's the second Saturday of each month. Hopefully, that thing will grow as well, and maybe end up being an economic development activity. One final fact, Mr. Farrell, I, I didn't write the notes down, so I apologize. I was contacted by a citizen, a chest high of royalty, for not attending BYU graduation. And the only thing that I could say to that citizen was that I didn't receive an invitation. I didn't even receive a notice of attendance at home the day I was attending. But I didn't get anything. And so I just want to go on record publicly, saying it made horrible, not received anything at graduation.
I also heard about that.
Nor did I.
Nor did I. And I, in that conversation I had, I, I, I figured that this board did not receive anything. And as I, as an individual, did not receive anything, so. But thank you for bringing that up. Anything else?
On the 24th, are we going to go as a group? If I were to choose between the four or five, that's a pleasure.
Just make your own choice, I guess.
And there'll be no county business conducted. So I, I don't think it's, it's relevant that we split into three and four. There were just two groups put together.
I think it's still probably a public meeting, Mr. Manager.
Okay, so...
But it's, you just noticed both, both opportunities.
Okay, absolutely.
All right, no further upcoming events or announcements. Need a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, by the way, we'll call voting. Commissioner Oestreicher?
Aye.
Commissioner McVeigh?
Aye.
Commissioner Jeffries? Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Dickerson?
Aye.
Commissioner Carter?
Aye.
Commissioner Owen, aye. We now sit adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen.